City Council Meeting to Order. Would you please rise for the pledge? Mr. Murray, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danny, for a moment of prayer, silent meditation. Thank you. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please? A roll call, please.
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree. Councilman Hanky.
Here.
President Dawson.
Present. We have a quorum. I would remind everybody to turn your cell phones on airplane mode or on silent and remind all our council people to speak directly into the mic. Could I have a motion for minutes for approval for March 18th, 2024 council meeting? I have a motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mrs. Hines, for motion to approve any council discussion. Seeing none. Everybody's on rub X, right? All right. Would you do a roll call vote, Angie? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and introductions.
Do you approve the minutes from April 1st, please?
Yes, all right.
April 1.
April 1.
Okay. Got a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2024 council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mrs. Hines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, Mr. Murray. We have a presentation from Bill Murray, Vibrant Communities, Vibrant Cities Survey Presentation.
Has everyone received the packet? Bill Murray, I'm from Elkhart, Indiana, representing Vibrant Communities, and I'd like to talk this evening about the 2023-2024 survey that we took to measure vibrancy in Elkhart County and specifically the results for the city of Indiana, or the city of Elkhart, rather, excuse me. Couple things about the survey. This is the third time that we have done a survey of Elkhart County. In 2019, we looked at one dimension called attachment, and that was based on research that was done by the Knight Foundation, conducted by the Gallup polling organization, and that was used as some of the early guiding information for the development of the 77-item action agenda that was developed early on in the days of Vibrant Communities. In 2021, we worked with a professor from the University of Notre Dame and a group from fellows and interns from N-Focus, and we added four different dimensions to look at a broader perspective of vibrancy. So what we measure now is attachment, we look at opportunity, resilience, neighborhood satisfaction, and overall community satisfaction. The survey was done in 2023, opened up toward the end of May, early June of last year. We sent out 5,000 mailings with surveys attached, and we also had stacks available around the city in both English and in Spanish online. And overall, we got a response back of about 420-something respondents by November, of which there were several groups that were underrepresented. We reopened the survey in January and February, and we now have a total of 520-some respondents, of which there are 298 from the city of Elkhart. So in looking at the survey, one of the things I want to caution everybody is this is not used for research purposes, so we're not concerned about statistical reliability. We're more concerned about perceptions and perspectives. And we look at the things that we measure on the survey as leading indicators. What we found with place making and quality of place is that how people feel often lead their actions. And so if somebody looks at something and says, "I know people in my neighborhood," or "I do things with people in my neighborhood," they're more likely to go out and do more with people in their neighborhood. We look at if people respond on a survey to say something like, on a scale of 1 to 5, we get an average back of over four points something about first responders, police and fire and emergency services, that people are more likely to be trusting of those emergency services. So what we look at with the survey are leading indicators. If you look in your packets, the first thing I'd like to draw your attention to is the Vibrant Communities Elkhart survey page, and it's got the demographics, and this gives us a good perspective of who responded from the city of Elkhart. And the typical responde was a white female, married baby boomer, who's a homeowner, who's lived in Elkhart for over 20 years and has no kids at home. We got a number of different perspectives, but that would be if we looked at a single typical type, that would be it. You can see the breakdown. Just as an example, 60% more than 20 years living in Elkhart, 70% female, 63% married, the 72% Caucasian, and a college graduate. So that's a typical profile. There's also some other information in terms of the demographics for the city of Elkhart. And then toward the back part of that packet, you'll see all the responses to the open-ended questions. So whatever question was asked, the way it's reported on this handout is exactly the way it was written on by the person doing the survey. So if there's a spelling error, it shows up on this report. If it's in Spanish, it shows up in Spanish. If it's all in caps, it shows up as all in caps. And one of the interesting things about the survey as I look at it is the comments tend to correlate nicely with some of the individual items. So example, you'll see a lot of comments about parks and trails, and that rates high in the survey. And typical of people from Elkhart, there are contrasting views for just about everything. Love it, don't like it. It's nice and clean and well-maintained. We got crummy buildings. So again, it's very interesting to look at the perspectives and how they stack up in the open-ended comments. And rather than go through everything in great detail, what I've done is I've given you my contact information. If you have additional questions or comments or concerns, or would just want to go through things in further detail, I'll happily do it on a one-to-one basis at your convenience. The second set of handouts, or in the handout, rather, is an overview of the Elkhart scores. And as I'd mentioned, we measure five different things. Attachment looks at a respondent's social and emotional commitment to the place where they live. And there's three leading indicators of that. Openness, so that's the inclusion, respect for people of different types, social offerings, basically stuff to do and places to go, and aesthetics, both natural beauty and man-made beauty. The overall score combined for that is 3.43 on a five-point scale. So all the numerical questions we asked had a five-point scale. So it might be like, or it might be agree with, but it will always use the five-point scale. So we're consistently measuring back on that five-point scale, and five's always high. Entrepreneur, or opportunity, rather, is an interesting metric. What it basically measures is the ability for people to have the opportunity to have a reasonably good income relative to a cost of housing and cost of living. And this was done by a research organization out of Washington, Washington, D.C., called Third Way. And what they did was they ranked every market area in the country based on that combination of figures. So median income, cost of housing, cost of living overall, and they ranked them. And if you take a look at the rankings, number one was Rochester, Minnesota, home of the Mayo Clinic. Number 203 was San Francisco, California. Elkhart-Goshen market area ranked 51st out of 203, and by comparison, South Bend-Michewaka ranked 93rd. We're a little bit lower than Hamilton County and a little bit higher than Allen County, Fort Wayne. So we sit pretty well in this area, and these scores really look strongly at the ability to have that kind of living or lifestyle that we talked about, affordable lifestyle. The one comment that we see come up, and this is mentioned several times, is a problem that we know, and that is cost of affordable housing as well as diversity of the economy within the county. The heavy reliance on the RV transportation industry, both a strength and a weakness. The next thing we looked at is resilience, and there are two federal agencies that look at resilience. One is FEMA, so the ability to come back from a tornado or a hurricane or a fire, and the other is the Federal Reserve Bank, the ability to bounce back from an economic downturn. And we looked at health and well-being, economy and financial infrastructure, social infrastructure, which is the entities within the community, like the Boys and Girls Club, like the libraries, like the churches and the church network, and the people who manage and guide those things. Physical infrastructure and natural environment, which we asked different things by and large as opposed to the aesthetics of it. It's how well is it maintained, how well is it governed, how well is it run, how well is it appreciated, and then local government and planning. And if you look overall, the scores there combine for 3.39 on a four-point scale. The next thing we look at is commonality, or neighborhood satisfaction. The first item there is a one-question sub-session, which is how much do you have in common with your neighbors? And what we find is the more diverse the community, the lower the score on that item. The important thing to look at with neighborhood satisfaction, and this is a slight raise from 2021 when we did it, is the involvement with people in the neighborhoods, the treatment of property. So it's how do people treat my property, so they treat it with respect, and do they show respect and trust for me? So it's my perception of my neighbors and how they feel about me and my property. And those scores all came up slightly, but significantly. And when I use the term significantly in looking at the survey results like this, one of the things I look at is if I look at the item and say, "Oh, that's significant. It means something to me." It's not a statistical number, but it says, "Oh, there's something to that." And then the final thing we look at is community satisfaction, which is, "I feel like I belong," or excuse me, "I like my community. I feel like I belong here, and I take pride in my community." And that consistently, that community satisfaction is consistently high across the county. So that's always the highest segment we've seen this time around throughout the county. Elkhart is a city scores right smack dab in the middle, but they're all really close. The final thing to look at, and it's not on the items here, but we asked about opportunity and optimism. And over 80% of the respondents scored either strongly agree or agree that they are optimistic about the future of Elkhart and Elkhart County. And that's consistent with every community that we surveyed, all seven of them here in Elkhart. Our plans are to go through the detailed information with Dr. David Bluen from Indiana University, Professor of Sociology, who conducted the survey this time around. We are already preparing for 2025 with some adjustments in how to get more statistical representation of the different populations, but we plan on continuing the process to see where there's growth. The other thing you might want to take a look at is the action agenda for the city of Elkhart. And as you look at some of the things that we've gotten input from throughout the community, is there's some interesting correlations between what people say they would like to see or that they already like and want to see more of with the action agenda items for the city of Elkhart, particularly relative to downtown arts and culture and neighborhoods. I'll be glad to answer any questions if there's any at this stage.
Questions for Mr. Murray. Mr. Hanky.
So I, there's parts of this that I find really, probably something we should be paying significant attention to, and that is, what do you like least about Elkhart County? And it talks about Elkhart specifically in here, and I do believe some of it validates what we do know. The areas, of course, I think that's what we should really pay attention to. And I was going to share with Levon at the chamber as well, but the areas, not so much. He would look at this and say, "Gosh, I didn't realize income levels were at this height by percentage." And I think that's just based on the limited number of people that you had mentioned qualified, that they are primarily white females, educated people, that are glad they don't have kids at home anymore. So I can see that part of it being skewed. I wish there was a larger cap of this. And I was going to ask about, you know, how And I was going to ask about, you know, how we rank comparatively, but you did cover that base. It is out of five, that gives us a good idea. And then a trend report would be good to see over the last, what length of time period are these numbers improving or going backwards? Those are, you know, pretty measurable, even in the same audience. I would appreciate that as well. But the thing I find best for me to glean is what aren't we doing well, so what opportunities do we have in front of us? So I really appreciate the study. You've introduced it well, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. So thank you for being with us and presenting some good information. So when you started the process, where did you collect your emails or your addresses from? Where did you, what's your starting point? Because if it's skewed like this, seemingly skewed, where did it all start?
Well, we purchased a mailing list from a company that provides mailing lists for this kind of purpose. And we look for a random selection of the population of Elkhart County.
So that it was an accurate random sampling to get that 5,000, I think you said, or?
That's what we sent out, yes.
Yeah. So that sampling was 5,000 based on the sampling that you started with, from the mailing list?
Yes.
Yeah. The criteria was established by the polling agency?
Right. So that's one part of it. The second is that the online survey is open to anybody who wants to respond. Now, we do throw out anybody that says they're not from Elkhart County, but we do take responses. And that's where we had the preponderance of Hispanic responders was online. The interesting thing is, for the first time this year, we had more Hispanics responding in English, which tells us that that's, we're getting better entrenched in the community, and that we're having probably a younger response population.
Is there a way to check, verify that they are from Elkhart County when they do the online or even a mailing?
Just by what community they say they're from. Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Henke.
Let me fall back, just so I could be clear on some of this. What do you like least? And I think we should pay attention, because a lot of it talks about unkept houses, crime and homelessness, as mentioned several times, big drugs, you know, big drug problem, all the homeless laying everywhere, drug addicts everywhere, goes down the page, quite honestly. Elkhart City has a lot of rundown areas. And I know they're starting to put dens in certain spots, but after the Ball State study, as mentioned, it would be nice to see over time how we can improve these numbers. It does talk about the Good Old Boy Network of politicians, that's an interesting one. Homelessness, again, how rundown things can be, dirty, old buildings, people that don't take care of their housing. There was one in here that I thought was very skewed. It talked about Republican control of politics. That must not be for Elkhart City.
That's probably for the state of Indiana. Definitely not Elkhart City.
But again, a very good read, most importantly for me, I believe, are the comments of what we can do better.
And I'd like to build on what you said there, because one of the things we find when we do surveys like this is you do the survey, and you expect to get different results, but you don't do anything different between the survey first time and second time. So my recommendation would be, is to pick that one item or that handful of items or that one area that's really critical, and work on that as opposed, because if you try to do everything in here, you'll drive yourselves and the whole city crazy in the process. And we don't need more of that.
Mr. Michler. You good? Mr. Oats.
Thanks again, Mr. Murray. As a teacher, I try to do the sandwich method, and that's two good things for every bad thing, otherwise people get sad. So if you were to summarize what you think are the two best items that come up to you as significant, and then the one that you think would be an opportunity for us, I think you're better acquainted with the results, and it is good to read through. What would be your two positives, and then the one that you would place as a priority for the community to try to improve maybe next time?
The two greatest positives from my perspective are relative to downtown and relative to neighborhoods, just overall. As I'd mentioned, I think that there was some significant differences in neighborhoods between this time in 2023 and last time. Again, it's not big, not big numbers, it's just like, oh, there's jumps there, and that's not happening because of fate, luck, chance, or magic. There's been an effort made to improve neighborhood and that sort of thing. The opportunity, and it's mentioned in there several times, is around the Benham area and the capacity and the interest and willingness to build up that area and to make it a more desirable place for people to live and work. And I think that's critical for the long-term, long-term health of the city.
Thank you. Bill, appreciate you being here. If you want to stick around later, and maybe some of the guys will have a private conversation with you. Appreciate all your work. Thank you. At this time, we have a, Mayor, I took the opportunity to issue a proclamation, hope you don't mind. Okay. Okay, well, you might want to find out what it is first. We have a city employee, Ms. Deb Barrett, who is a diehard Star Wars fan, and she's asked me to do this for like five years. So I kind of took presidential privilege and asked Angie to put together a proclamation. So Deb is online. So Angie, would you please read the proclamation? May the fourth be with you.
Absolutely. Proclamation, may the fourth be with you. Whereas on this auspicious day, the force of imagination unites us in a galaxy far, far away. Whereas the saga of heroes, villains, and the enduring battle between light and dark has inspired generations. Whereas the timeless wisdom of the Jedi Order continues to guide us in the pursuit of justice, compassion, and understanding. Whereas the bravery of the rebels reminds us that ordinary beings can achieve extraordinary feats in the face of tyranny. Whereas the epic adventures of Luke Skywalker, Princess Leia, Han Solo, and countless others ignite our spirits and fuel our dreams. Whereas the creativity and dedication of filmmakers, artists, writers, and fans have enriched our lives with a universe of boundless possibilities. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed, may the fourth be celebrated as a day of joy, camaraderie, and boundless imagination. Let us honor the legacy of Star Wars by embracing its values of hope, resilience, and the power of human spirit. Whether you're a Jedi, a Sith, or a scruffy-looking Nerf herder, let us come together to share our love for this beloved saga, and may the force be with us always. Signed the sixth day of May, 2024, Arvis Dawson, President, Elkhart City Common Council.
All right, Deb, there you go. You have your proclamation.
President Dawson, I also take a minute to do an introduction.
Yes.
Sure. Melody, could you stand up, please? So this is Melody Wise. She is going to be my part-time backup person, so if I'm out sick or want a vacation, or need a vacation, Melody will be filling in for the council. So Melody is here Tuesdays and Thursdays full-time, or all day, and then every other Friday or every other Monday if we have a council meeting. So if you guys could take a minute and welcome her.
Welcome, welcome, welcome aboard.
If I was you, I'd take a trip on the spaceship Enterprise and get the devil out. Oh, okay.
All right. Unfinished business, there are no reports of council committees, there are no ordinances on second and third reading, there are no ordinances in resolutions referred to committee. Table ordered resolution 24-0-10 will remain table. Ordinance on first reading, would you please read this ordinance by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-11, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3116 as amended, entitled an ordinance establishing the rules and regulations for the government of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, and its members to add the Tax Abatement Committee as a standing committee of the Common Council.
There are no objections, we'll pass this on a second reading. Resolution, would you please read proposed resolution 24-r-09 in its entirety, please?
Resolution 24-r-09, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, acknowledging Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15, 2024. Whereas the police officers of the City of Elkhart and the peace officers throughout the United States serve their neighborhood, neighbors, and communities without regard to the risk and dangers presented by their public service. And whereas on January 3, 1791, Constable Darius Quimby was killed in Albany County, New York, marking the first known death of the law enforcement officer killed in the line of duty. And whereas to date in our nation's history, 26,606 law enforcement officers have died in the line of duty. And whereas on May 4, 1963, President John F. Kennedy signed Presidential Proclamation 3537, declaring May 15 of that year and all succeeding years as Peace Officer Memorial Day. And whereas on October 15, 1991, President George H.W. Bush dedicated the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas on September 13, 1994, President Bill Clinton signed the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994 into law, directing that the flag of the United States on all government buildings be lowered to half-staff on May 15 of each year. And whereas, as we approach May 15, 2024, it is fitting to honor and remember the five police officers of the City of Elkhart who lost their lives in the line of duty. Officer Willard S. Burton, October 27, 1888. Officer Orin N. Schelmandine, February 9, 1920. Patrolman Henry W. Wentz, December 13, 1924. Patrolman Douglas Michael Adams, March 20, 2001. And Corporal Michael L. Swiger, December 29, 2009. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, that the City of Elkhart acknowledges May 15, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and remembers the law enforcement officers of the City of Elkhart and throughout the United States who have died in the line of duty. So resolved the sixth day of May, 2024.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution? Got a motion by Mr. Henke, second by Mrs. Hines, council discussion. Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to the council floor, and the other council discussion. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Henke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one, or I'm sorry, passes eight to zero.
That's better.
Yeah, sorry. I counted Chad as the one.
Would you read proposed resolution 24-r-10 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-r-10, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the downtown master plan as amended of the comprehensive plan of the City of Elkhart, Indiana.
Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Henke, second by Mr. Fish. Mr. Huber.
Good evening. Mike Huber, Director of Building Services, City of Elkhart. So the resolution this evening, with this resolution, we are asking for your consideration to pass and adopt this downtown master plan, which was recently completed with a lot of help from the community, as an advisory document to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan's contents are outlined under Indiana Code 37-4, 7-4-500. Effectively, it requires that a comprehensive land use plan include a statement of objectives for future development, a statement of policies for land use, and a statement of policies for development of public ways, public lands, public utilities, and public structures. This document, we've had the Comprehensive Land Use Plan passed for a while. The reason this document is being asked to be passed as part of that is this kind of brings an additional level of focus and thinking, and updated thoughts and strategies and policies specifically related to the downtown. We anticipate that we'll be doing a similar process with this once we have a final version of the Benham Neighborhood Plan to provide additional guidance around how to address those same issues in that neighborhood. I'd like to point out, there's not a regulatory plan that's a, there is a regulatory plan included in here, it's an example. The regulatory enforcement arm of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is the zoning ordinance. This isn't addressing the zoning ordinance. We'll have a updated Unified Development Ordinance coming to the council later this year as well. This planning process originated in January of 2023. We had a week-long charrette with a number of consultants, a consulting team, that were brought together kind of in a unique way. We had a partnership, the city was invited, but really, we had some families, some generous philanthropic families in the Community Foundation, and We Impact, the Rex and Al Smarten Foundation, or Family Foundation, and the Community Foundation hired Mool and Palazoides to lead this planning process and the charrette process. It was a pretty intense week. I know our staff and our team from the city, from all departments, participated throughout the week. We had multiple iterations of the project, but it was really to kind of help us capitalize and capture on the previous work that had been done in a similar fashion in the River District, which has kind of resulted in a number of the great things that are happening there. And then it was a process that was replicated in the Benham planning process as well. The boundaries of the plan are effectively the river on the north, Third Street, or just off of Third Street on the west, basically the railroad tracks on the south, and then kind of the river on the east as well. So we're kind of talking about the core of the downtown as the boundaries of this plan. There was a, five kind of core layers of the illustrative plan, which was one of the core components of this, that really kind of set out those statements and those policies. The five kind of key layers for that included a robust open space network strategy, a multimodal transportation and parking strategy, a districting strategy, which really tried to tie different uses and different opportunities within the downtown altogether, a plan for civic, for great civic amenities, and a preservation and context-sensitive mixed-use infill that included the draft regulatory and zoning recommendations. The core components of the open space strategy really highlighted the fact that we have a real lack of urban canopy and trees in downtown, and that we don't connect our spaces very well. We have a great network of open space along the river, but it doesn't feel as jointed as it should. And so there's a number of recommendations in the open space strategy that really highlight ways and opportunities we can do that by bringing significantly more street trees and urban design elements to the current parking and open spaces we have and to the street public realm areas. But the most significant component as it relates to the open space network in the plan included a recommendation of continuing to build out the Elkhart Riverwalk on the west bank of the river. We've done a really nice job on the east bank. This would be what was termed during the planning process as the esplanade, but this was a really kind of an idea and a concept for building out the Riverwalk on the west bank, and really then having that be kind of the core central green space that ties the core downtown with the River District effectively, and provides for that continuity of the open space network. The next major component was the transportation and parking strategy, and the core elements of the transportation strategy really identified and addressed issues we've had with kind of the demise of the second and third street quarters over the years. It used to be significantly more dense, we've had developed, we've had structures demolished over time, and we have an abundance of surface parking, parking lots in those corridors. And they related that a lot to the transition the city made from two-way to one-way streets, and the speeds and the fact that cars aren't coming to downtown, they're coming through downtown, and it's not very safe or walkable for pedestrians to kind of maneuver through downtown. And so one of the core strategies, one of the core components of the transportation strategy- strategy was returning Second and Third, Harrison and Marion, back to one-way, back to two-way streets and, and bringing in some opportunities within the, the design of those streets to really allow for traffic calming. I, I think I noticed this one, one day I was driving down Third Street, the speed on Second and Third Streets when the lights are, I mean, you've got cars approaching forty miles an hour and it's almost like, you know, if you're trying to be a person walking in downtown among cars at forty miles an hour, it's, it's a pretty scary place to be. So there are some sort of ideas about how we can calm, calm the traffic, including something that contributes to, to the overall parking strategy as well, and that's kind of redesigning the streets so that we've got angle parking on one side and we've got, we have parallel parking on the other side and a slight reduction in the travel lane widths, which should really help accomplish slowing the speeds down a little bit, but also adding to our on-street parking inventory. And so one of the core components of the parking strategy was that. The other was this idea or concept of a park-once strategy. If we want to have downtown be dense again, we have to take all of these surface parking lots and turn them into development sites and have active businesses or residents on those spaces. Those cars, those, those folks will obviously need places to park. So there's a, there's a strategy. This park-once strategy identifies four locations, four parking structures that are walkable within walkable zones to allow folks to be able to park and walk and move through downtown in a very, very safe, pedestrian-safe and, and walkable manner and, and, and serve as real incentives for us to be able to transition those underutilized parcels now back into usable tax revenue-producing spaces. And, and speaking of tax, tax revenue-producing spaces, the, the next piece was really kind of talking about our civic amenities and it highlighted the density of, of public nonprofit uses in our downtown. And, and the first, the first civic amenity was highlighted as the Catalyst Project. And the Catalyst Project identified in here was the development of the amphitheater and the, and the Central Green component. You know, we, we still continue to agree. We think this has a tremendous opportunity. It really fits well with the city's history with music and, and can leverage what we're doing at the learner and, and all of the things that, that are related in this plan as it speaks to the Catalyst Project. You know, we, we fully believe that it has the power to be a transformational project, but there are other components of the civic amenities as well. And that's this idea of a combined civic center location for, for public uses. We've got them, multiple organizations and agencies spread throughout the city. How do we start to combine some of those? How do we find ways to condense those? One, to make it more intuitive for the residents to find and access those services, but also to open up those other spaces for folks and the private sector to come in and take those, those properties and, and make them tax revenue-producing again. And the other civic amenity that was highlighted in the planned is the idea of a refurbished depot and depot square as a multimodal hub for transportation. The last kind of core component of this was really about housing and building preservation and how we can leverage the zoning code to do those things. And, and so this is the space where it really talked about, and there are, it's a very form-based code piece that really highlights how, how we should look at the form of our urban development moving forward. We are adopting these as a part of our UDO. So we have taken the core components out of here and, and we are incorporating them into the, into the new Unified Development Ordinance. So the last thing I want to really kind of highlight on, and I'll show this real quick. So again, this wasn't a plan that was done kind of by itself, so this relates directly to the work that was done in the River District as well as what's happening in the Benham Plan. So, I mean, in terms of how the administration and how our department and how our team are using this document, we plan to leverage all of these to be able to start implementing all of the strategies that are highlighted in here so that they are consistent and we've got a consistent approach to how we attract new development and we do it in a thoughtful and intentional way. We align our public, our public infrastructure and public safety improvements around these plans to make sure that we can leverage the most new investment we can out of these. And, and both this plan and the Benham Neighborhood Plan have targets for the types and amount of development where we could like to see them in terms of what the housing possibilities are and opportunities are, and that's what we're doing. We're, we're working to implement this. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Hanky?
You know, we still have the amphitheater as a catalyst, and I'm wondering where we are with that and then with AMP backing away, you know, the financial impact, because ultimately, I like all the pictures, I like all the stories, I like the themes and moving forward, but it does take a significant amount of municipal revenues to incentivize a lot of these projects to move forward. So where are we with AMP and what do we propose after the AMP group effectively pulled out or are they re-engaged?
So currently with the amphitheater project, we, we are out, we have created a, a little slide deck that kind of outlines the core components of the plan and we're, we are trying to get in front of and identify other potential development partners who would have an interest in making a project like this happen in Elkhart.
So, and, and the obvious, you know, you know, the answer, the question before I even say it, you know, my, my job early on as finance chair was to create a capital improvement fund in which we would move excess funds and rainy day funds and move it over for times when revenue would dry up around us, the economic outlook would become poor or slowed, which looks like that's where we're headed on a national basis. So we were trying to drive that up so we could incentivize, and yet a lot of these, a lot of those dollars started to go towards road improvements and other projects. So do we have a real plan to push money that direction and hold it for those times of low economic output and so we could help move our city forward in tougher times and get job creators here and developers here, quite honestly, during that same period? Is there a real plan to push that money forward and what would be the minimum per year we would expect to push that direction?
I'm not sure I fully understand the specific part of your question in terms of where, when you say push, push money forward, where, where you're meaning to, where we're pushing it. I will say that we, we are engaged with multiple developers on a number of projects. Right now is a pretty exciting time because of the addition of Ready, and so we're strategically and intentionally aligning the Ready projects that we plan to, to put our support with and behind with these plans and these goals and the strategies that are outlined both in this and the Benham Neighborhood and the Riverwalk and the River District Plan. And we are finding ways to be able to both leverage future project investment and current balances in order to make sure that those projects have the infrastructure needs met that they need to be able to come through, but also have support to make the projects financially viable and make sure that the city gains the bulk and the best opportunity to reap the rewards of those investments by those private developers.
More measurably, under Tim Neese, for example, there was a five percent overall was our goal to put into capital improvement rainy day of, otherwise, under Dick Moore at his latter years, we were at three percent. So I'm just wondering if there's that gauge.
Those are questions that Jamie would probably be better able to answer than, than me.
But we don't know.
Mr. Fish?
Thank you.
Correct. Correct. If, if you have folks who have questions, by all means, we're happy to talk with them and address those questions.
I'll try. But most of the time, we just get screened by constituents.
No, 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 we absolutely can give you the data that supports the decisions we're making, for sure.
Because I want you to be able...
Yep.
Some of this is...
Correct.
This is all good stuff.
Yep. Perfect.
Mr. Mishler?
Thank you. First, just to address something real quick that Councilman Hanky mentioned regarding the rainy day fund. Couple council meetings ago, we received a treasurer's report from our comptroller, and it stated that we have a rainy day calculated ending balance of around eleven million, with our budget of around a hundred and eighteen million, give or take. That puts us pretty much where you would like us to, to be, and I could provide this to you if you want to look over it as well if you don't have a copy.
No, we left it with sixty-eight million in my last term.
All right. Thank you.
Continuing, my question is also, is this something, this master plan, is this something the city paid for? I know there was something in the ARP funding a while ago for it.
So we were actually not a financial partner in this plan. This was, again, as I mentioned, the funding partners were all philanthropic on the, on bringing this plan to the, to the city. However, we were invited to be participants and informing and being part of the development of the plan.
Now, those philanthropic partners, were they part of the amphitheater group or anything like that?
There, there were folks that were involved in downtown development and in, and around the, the amphitheater as well, yes.
Okay, because my only question is there is, this is a very well put together report and I very, much like it. My only concern there is that it focuses very heavily on saying an amphitheater or an amphitheater-like project would be the greatest thing since sliced bread right there downtown, and it's also paid for potentially by the people who would most likely benefit from having an amphitheater downtown. Was there any concern about that? Was that addressed at all in meetings?
No, I don't think there was, and, and just, I think, if you'll remember during the Plan Commission, Councilman Mishler, even Stephanos Polozoidis mentioned that really the theme and the idea of a catalyst project is what's plugged in in that space, that what we have right now is great, but it doesn't perform as a catalyst. And, you know, this is an example of a catalyst project that we think fits the community. It was, I, it came out as a project that would fit with the community. We're committed to trying this. It doesn't, I mean, that something else couldn't happen there.
Excellent, thank you. The other thing that I'll mention briefly is one of the major concerns that I have received in the first district regarding East Jackson is the attempt to slow down traffic there, specifically the large center medians. A lot of drivers don't like that kind of forced architecture, and speaking with our city engineer in the past, he said that in discussion with your department that there wouldn't be a, a large central median, especially with angled parking, because it makes it very hard to, to have both of those things together. So I just want folks at home and people to know here that they might not, that that's not something they're going to have to worry about.
On the downtown streets, primary downtown streets? No, that's correct. If you look at the street, in the plan, there are street sections for every one of the street areas and they're color-coded and it tells you there are no new medians being proposed for any of the, of any of the downtown streets.
No new medians. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, thank you, Mr. Huber. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Please come forward.
Hello again, Lori Harris. I live at two-five-zero-five Green Leaf Boulevard, and I, I only thought I was going to come up here and speak if someone mentioned the amphitheater project and, and what happened there. So I'm going to start first with you, Mr. Mishler. The question that you just asked about the Elkhart AMP Group and the fact that we were involved with sponsoring the charrette in January. My response to that is, number one, Elkhart AMP Group hadn't been formed yet when the charrette took, took place in January of twenty twenty-three. Secondly, Elkhart AMP Group was asked by this administration to spearhead this project, and Elkhart AMP Group is a five-oh-one-C-three. I'll finish by saying, if myself or Rex Martin or any employee or agent or consultant of Elkhart AMP Group entered into this project to make money or entered into any sort of project for financial gain, it wouldn't be building an amphitheater in downtown Elkhart. There are better ways to invest money. I have a couple of questions about the downtown Elkhart Master Plan being advisement, an advisement document. What does that mean exactly? Maybe, Mike, you can answer that. It's true that the downtown Elkhart Master Plan was a study, and it was a study based on the idea of a catalyst project in downtown Elkhart, which, to be honest with you, was never my idea. It was earth, wind and fire and the vision of having something really great and really special in Elkhart. This study that happened in January of twenty twenty-three was exactly that, a study. As we began talking about downtown Elkhart and all of the great things that were already happening and all of the wonderful projects that had come before the amphitheater idea, we were sitting around one night having dinner with Stephanos, and Stephanos said, "Well, let's study this. Let's study it and see if it can work." The catalyst project for downtown Elkhart doesn't have to be an amphitheater on the Central Green, although I hope it is. Obviously, we are very supportive of, of that idea. What I would ask, though, is if council is going to vote to adopt this downtown master plan because of the time, effort, energy and study that has gone into this, down to the types of trees that we should be planting downtown, that you adopt it wholly. Don't take bits and pieces from it. We had architects that flew in from all over the country. You were there, some of you, you saw, you saw what they did. They left no stone unturned when it comes to how to plan and revive a downtown. So please, if you're going to vote to adopt this plan, adopt it in its entirety. Don't pick it apart. Don't adopt certain pieces of it. You know, we want to do this part, but we're not going to do this part. So I would like, I would like a, a better sort of definition of what advisement document actually means. And then my last few questions are, number one, I'm, I'm thrilled to know that the city of Elkhart is moving forward with attempting to attract a developer for a downtown Elkhart amphitheater. Will the public have any input in the developer? My next question, as it relates to the downtown Elkhart Master Plan, is this. How does the, the current sewer project, because we know that area is going to be torn up, how does that align with the train depot vision that is, that is outlined in the downtown master plan? Because that, that property becomes a, a depot square or another town square and the Y goes away. Have we addressed that yet? And then lastly, a few weeks ago, there was a press conference where the mayor announced that the city would be purchasing the Chase Building to house the new safety, a police station, I don't know what the proper term is called. And how does that purchase of the Chase Building tie into the civic center that's detailed and documented in the downtown Elkhart Master Plan, because it's not in that block? So just another example of, you know, if, if we're going to do this, and trust me, I, I'm all for it, I think we should, obviously, but are we going to follow it? Are we really going to follow it? And if so, there are some things that... And if so, there are some things that have happened over the past few months that are just, that are not aligned with it. And so how do we rectify those things? Thank you.
Yeah. Then, what else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to the council floor. Any other council, I'm sorry. Yes, Nicole.
Patty doesn't need to give her address, so I'm not going to give mine. I'm just curious, if this master plan is implemented and a new administration takes over, like, does it have to be held up or how does that, like, you know, just, that's my question.
The only way I can answer all of those questions, this is a resolution. This is not an ordinance. This is not bound by law. This is what we resolved to do, you know? And we all believe that we're going to do this, you know? But anything can happen, you know? God forbid, we have another pandemic or, you know, something bad happens. But this is what we resolved to do. So when we say, it's a master plan, and we don't want to pick and choose, I believe. I believe all of us want to do this entire thing, but it all comes down to dollars and cents, timing, what the economy is going to look like. But we resolved to do this, and when we vote for this, that's what we resolved to do. Any other council discussion?
But I do think it's quite fair to talk about the Chase Building and some of those pieces.
It is, it is, but not right now, because that is not what's on the table right now. What's on the table right now is this master plan.
But I think that's a valid question, and I think-
So when the time comes to talk about the Chase Building, when they come to us and bring an appropriation to purchase it, that will be the time to talk about it.
So can I just bring it up to say that should be?
No, no.
Okay, that's just another-
Ms. McKee, would you, Angie, would you please do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Sure.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacations hearings. Other new business? I got a request from our county clerk to remind everybody that tomorrow is Election Day, and Mr. Anderson would appreciate if everybody turned out and did what we consider your civic duty and cast your ballot tomorrow between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Mr. Hanky.
So over the last, I wanted to bring up, over the last five years, I've asked for several documents from administration and commonly don't get them, but I was having good dialogue with John in regards to ambulance billing information requested. That kind of dropped off three or four months ago, and I just kind of wondered where we were with that. So I'm going to bring it back to some council rules. And that is, especially for new council members, the council has the authority to request, compel, audience, council members, other officers of the city, other witnesses, and may require production of documents, germane to matters being considered at a meetings of council. That is in our current council rule packet. The council has the power to supervise, investigate all departments, officers, employees of the city, and examine into any charge against them, into the affairs of any corporation, firm, and person in which the city may be interested or contracting. So when we ask for documents, I mean, the council rules obligate people to provide that information, number one. I also think that we should go, since we don't have a point-of-order rule, it goes to Roberts Rules. That was an issue the last council session. The standard of point-of-order takes precedent over any pending question out of which may arise. It yields to all privileged motions, is the number-one part of it. If a point-of-order does not adhere to a pending question raised, any substantive motion immediately pending stops all conversation. Grounds for a point-of-order, it is the right of every member who notices a breach of rules, insists on their enforcement. So it talks about that piece. It also talks about yielding to the parliamentarian as needed. I believe the last time the parliamentarian did try to make that point to the president, which was not adhered to. Form an example, when a member of this council or anybody sees a breach of order that may do harm if allowed to pass, he arises without waiting for recognition, immediately addresses the chair. Anyone who is speaking takes the seat, and the point is taken as a transgression of rule. So I would just like to correct it, since we're not showing a good example of that on our own rules, and hope that we could better adhere to it in the future.
Thank you. Is there other new business? Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to speak to and commend our Parks Department for the most recent farmer's market, which had every vendor stall full and had excellent attendance. And I encourage everyone to head down and check out the Elkhart Farmer's Market on Saturdays. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Fish.
Thank you. So I'd like to just announce that the new spring/summer Elkhart Environmental Center activity book is available. I've got 12 extra copies. The council got their copies tonight. Chock full of lots of activities and maps and lots of things. If you would like, if anybody in the public would like a copy here tonight, I've got 12. And please visit the, our center on Lusher. Thank you.
Also, the, I don't know if many of you have noticed that the ambassadors of downtown? I'm sure that's what the ambassadors are, that we passed, we adopted a, or we gave funding so we could hire these individuals to come downtown, sweep the streets, pick up. And so I don't know if anybody else has noticed them. I've noticed them. I think a lot of the people have asked me what they were. They're identifiable by the uniforms they're wearing. They're doing a good job. I know Cinco de Mayo was Saturday. And I mean, you woke up Sunday morning, I woke up Sunday morning, and you couldn't even tell there was an event downtown, you know? So it's working out well, and I think it's a good investment on our part. Reports, Mayor, Board of Works, Board of Safety. Any other department heads?
Good evening, council.
Evening.
Evening. Listen, a couple of things. First of all, I want to make sure that we acknowledge the death of Reverend Lefate Owens. Reverend Owens was a pillar in our community for many years. He was, over 30 years, the pastor of Community Missionary Baptist Church. Many different functions were held in his church. He was avidly involved with community affairs at multiple levels. He also was a, he was on the Housing Authority Board for many years, and he was a chaplain at our police department for many years as well. So we are mourning with his family. He died last night, early this morning, if I'm not mistaken. Early this morning, and obviously, you'll hear more about his service coming up very, very, very soon. Secondly, Councilman Dawson spoke a little bit about the Cinco de Mayo event. The Cinco de Mayo event wasn't sponsored by the city but supported by the city. It was an event that, quite frankly, last year was approximately maybe 3,000 to 5,000 people that came throughout the course of the day. This year, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,000 to 10,000 that came. It was a wonderful day, well-attended. Councilman Dawson is absolutely right about the block-by-block relationship with the ambassadors, well-dressed. Little confusion as to where to dump their garbage. We got that straightened out through a call from Haas. But by and large, it went really, really well. They were very respectful, walked up to people, and were wayfinders, as it goes, in letting people know where to go and what to do, and quite frankly, very informative along the way. So, so far, great start for the summer in general. Great start for the summer. My last action tonight has to do with our 911 dispatchers. The challenges that they face daily normally go unnoticed without the dispatchers, emergency services, and some other city departments would find and face struggles that would impact our citizens in very significant ways. On Tuesday, August 23rd, from around 7:55 until, I'm sorry, did I say August? Oh, I'm sorry. April 23rd, from around 7:55 until 8:45, St. Joseph County Dispatch Center had a catastrophic failure that led to all of their calls being lost or being routed to our dispatch center. During this time, our center received 31 calls for service, including our own emergency calls. At the very start of this incident, our officers became involved in a pursuit. After visiting, after talking with the St. Joe Dispatch, once this was able to begin, once they were able to begin receiving calls again, and the team sang, that team started to sing the praises of our four dispatchers, handling the workload usually handled by 13 dispatchers in their facility. The dispatchers advised me, which was Dustin, and our team that our team was kind, professional, and showed exemplary flexibility in a time of unique adversity. The director of the St. Joe County Dispatchers, Julie Toby, is working to issue challenge coins to our dispatchers who were working at the time and was very grateful that our department was able to be there for them in that time of crisis. So I wanted to let all of you know the kind of work that our dispatchers do on a regular basis. It's really second to none. They do a wonderful job. And as you can see, this particular challenge came in the face of adversity that was unforeseen at the moment. For South Bend's dispatch to be complete, South St. Joe County, that's completely St. Joe County, to be down completely. And all of their calls were routed through Elkhart, and we were able to not only handle their calls, but our calls as well during that time. I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that with an accommodation. The city of Elkhart 911 Communications Team has presented a certificate of appreciation in honor of your exemplary work in times of extreme pressure and high-volume workload and in assisting our neighbors in St. Joe County in their time of need. May 6, 2024. Mayor Rod Robertson. Dustin? Only if you would like to capture it even more than what I just did. I wish the print was a little bit bigger, so I wouldn't have to trip over all the fur.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Mayor. Yeah, Dustin McLean, Department Head for Elkhart City 911. I did just want to reiterate, the dispatchers that were working that evening, David Gordon, the team leader for that shift, our trainer, Ashley Dobbin, was also working with a trainee, Julia Warbianski, and another dispatcher, Brandy Burden. They did the work of 13 dispatchers over at St. Joe County, just the four of them. By the time I got into the center to assist, I took one call, and they said, "We got it." So they gave me the green light to be able to head over to St. Joe County, check on their team, make sure that they had everything they needed, and they were just singing the praises of our dispatchers. So I just want to make sure that all four of them got that shout-out that they deserve. Our midnight shift, actually, the other night, just ended up having to take about 19 calls in two minutes. I'll be filling you guys in on that in the near future. So, thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Thank them too, as well.
Dan Millaney's, Chief Elkhart Police. I just wanted to acknowledge the resolution for the officer appreciation coming up on May 15th. You all should have a flyer in your packet, so I just want to make sure that we invite all of you, and we'll try and send out some reminders, but if you can attend, we'd really appreciate it. You know, the things we just talked about with the dispatchers and all that, we talk about public service, and we talk about the sacrifices that we make in public service, whether it's police, fire, communications, our 911 center. But one of the things people, sometimes we tend to overlook, especially in our own agencies, as Dustin just talked about, is the capacity of the people that serve in Elkhart to do what they do. You're talking four people took on 13 dispatchers. That's just their calls. Don't forget about the ones that we had that they already had to take their responsibilities for. So that was in addition to. So now you're looking at 17 dispatchers. And it's pretty amazing what they do. And when we talk about the level of service and commitment, what's coming up and what the presidential proclamations were for really is the epitome and the ultimate sacrifice that we've had five officers, the Elkhart Police Department, make for our community and making sure that we honor that, regardless of what you think of, you know, what those departments should be doing or maybe that individual. That individual and those five officers we have were willing to lay down their lives for the people and the neighbors in the community here in Elkhart. And I've been really fortunate to be able to have interactions with all of you, many of you just in the last two weeks, and the support we've seen and felt, not only from this council, not only from the mayor's office, but from the city and the community as a whole. We're very, very fortunate and understand that that is reciprocated in the service that the men and women of the Elkhart Police Department provide and the level of dedication they have that includes laying their life down, literally, for this community. So I thank you for honoring that. I appreciate your acknowledgement of it, and we'd certainly like to welcome you to our service. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else?
Who's calling St. Joe County to tell them they're overstaffed?
Good evening. Andy Jones, Elkhart Municipal Airport. Last week, we had a tragedy where we had, we lost one of ours, one of our airport tenants. Tenants crashed his plane and passed away. He and a passenger. Ray Ridenhour was a good friend of the airport, longtime tenant. And his passenger, we affectionately referred to as Helicopter Bill. He was a Vietnam helicopter pilot. You know, that day, the FAA was on-site. The National Transportation Safety Board came all the way from the West Coast later in the day and the next day, and spent time with the family. They'll figure out what happened. You know, aviation is still the safest form of transportation, I believe. You know, there's a sign at the airport that's on a gate, is one, that says, "You're now leaving the safety of flight. Please drive carefully." I think that is, that is true. The Young Eagles, we're going to be offering free airplane rides to kids on May the 18th through the Experimental Aircraft Club. And hopefully, we'll have a lot of youngsters come out and take advantage of their first airplane ride. Hopefully, that'll entice them to become a pilot themselves. I know a lot of people who say they're pilots now got their first airplane ride when they were a kid from some volunteer pilot. So that'll be on the 18th from 9:00 until about 1:00 p.m. at the Elkhart Airport. Thanks.
Else? Seeing none, return to the council. Neighborhood Association reports. I think the Prairie Street Neighborhood Association had a meeting yesterday.
Yeah, the Pemaran.
Pemaran?
Pemaran Neighborhood Association did have a meeting yesterday at the Pemaran Pavilion. And we're very, a lot of discussion on the work that's being done at the pool and the pavilion. It's going to be very nice. You know, we have the only pool in the city, and it's a very nice pool. It attracts people to our community from surrounding communities. And we discussed having our May the 18th neighborhood cleanup. We passed out a flyer to 100 houses to invite everybody to get involved with that. And we look forward to that, working with the administration to do a little more than last year. And we targeted seniors in our neighborhood to kind of spruce up their property and people that might have some medical concerns. So that will be a good day. We're starting at 10:00, meeting there at the Green Space. And next month's meeting will be outside. We usually move out of the pavilion to free that up for graduations and stuff. So we will- So we will be outside next month, which is a good thing for the people that don't come. They know we're meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none. Privileges of the floor. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything falling on the jurisdiction of the Elkhart Economic Council, or what's not on the agenda?
Yeah. My name is Ralph Spellbring. Sixteen years ago, on the first Sunday in May, Senator Barack Obama visited Bank Street. I looked outside my door about one o'clock. There were a whole bunch of people. I wondered what was going on, and somebody had a boom mic that went from maybe here to the wall. I realized Senator Clinton was to be in South Bend, so it had to be Senator Obama. Sure enough, it was. So I went and shook his hand and wished him good luck. I didn't realize what a basketball fan he was at that point in time. The house on the corner there, 1600 Superior, so sometimes I've made the comment that Senator Obama went from 1600 Superior Street in Elkhart to 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue in nine I was driving south on Benham after rain in the late seventies, hit the standing water. It killed the engine in my vehicle. Then you could park on the north side of Indiana, so pushed it down there, left it, went back the next day, and it started right off. Then in January of 1977, the temperature never got above freezing. One day when I started the car, it wouldn't start, so we pushed it out on the street. Then when the temperature got above freezing in February, it started right off. It seems to me that some of the elected officials here in northern Indiana had problems with the United States Constitution. Here was a South Bend Tribune, says comments not allowed on agenda items for commissioners. They changed their mind. The South Bend Tribune published three letters in the month of January. The Goshen News published six. One was written by me. The South Bend, the Elkhart Truth published zero letters. So that the Elkhart Truth's forum is much reduced. So I think the limiting comments to three minutes is too short, given that the truth doesn't publish the letters that it did say ten years ago or twenty years ago. And specifically, Legal Leach Goddick upstairs thinks the United States Constitution does not apply in Elkhart City. Constitutional Indiana City Courts do not eliminate or exclude evidence that may indicate city employee misconduct, mistakes, or neglect. City of Elkhart, does it have a constitutional city court? That's a question that I think is relevant. In late, at the time of the county fair one year, I went for a walk on the south side of Elkhart. I noticed properties with abandoned tires. These can be a breeding ground for mosquitoes carrying diseases. Several people died in Michigan from mosquito diseases in 2019. I took pictures. There were twenty properties in south central Elkhart that had tires. And so Judge Goddick took the evidence of the city employee that neglected his job, allowed all those to accumulate. All of my evidence was eliminated.
Thank you, Ralph. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
I'll try to keep this short. I was here at the last council meeting, and I don't have too much more to add since I was here last. I'm here about the noise issue.
Please state your name, sir.
Lamar Mast, sorry. I'm here just talking about the noise issue that we've been having with Welch packaging. So just to bring it to your attention again, as of, of course, we're here again because there hasn't been a resolution, so just wanted the council to know that again, that we're still dealing with it, been dealing with it for the last year and a half. But I also wanted to mention that the last time we were here, it was mentioned by a couple of council members that maybe we were blaming the council for inaction or just not being taken care of, and that's not at all the case. No blame here. We actually think, I think the inspectors for the city, some of the officials did a great job. They were discussing the issue with Welch packaging, and they took it to the point where they were, you know, having some issues, trying to have some of the issues resolved, but it didn't go far enough. So I think where the failure came is that they gave their blessing on the decibel level at that point, and that didn't solve the problem. It's still too loud. And I know that just because of the decibel level, the noise ordinance states that just because the decibel level is below that eighty-three decibels, that it's still a quality-of-life issue, like we said at the last meeting. So anyway, just to bring that to your attention again. But I do understand that Welch packaging is generous. They donate a lot to the city, sponsor a lot of events, a lot of money spent here and there. We're just asking that maybe some of those funds could be redirected to the neighbors, to the actual neighbors. You know, they like to perceive themselves as a good neighbor to the city and everyone, but I can see the machine that's making the noise from my bedroom window. We're just asking that maybe some of those funds be directed towards fixing this issue. They make more money in a day than I think all of us can make in a lifetime combined. So if it comes down just to a matter of money, spend a little bit more and fix the problem so that us as neighbors don't have to deal with this irritation night after night. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council Joe Foy, 22984, Weymouth Lane. I'm here for the same reason, the noise. While Lamar lives only a third of a mile away, I live two-thirds, three-quarters of a mile away, and as I mentioned the last time, it is even loud in my area. Tonight, I was just coming forward to ask if anybody had been checking the police logs as we had been instructed to report to, to see what this level of irritation is to the neighbors, not only the ones that are here tonight, but others who may have called in because that's what we have been directed to do. So I hope that you're reaching out to the communication center and, or somebody is, to maybe get a handle on, not that it's just us. One question I had of you is, would it be beneficial for us to take around a petition, just asking neighbors who can't make it to these meetings to sign so you can see how many people it's truly affecting in our area? Would that be beneficial?
Probably up to you.
Very good. And I know that the last time you said you were going to reach out to the administration, and I had reached out to one member of the council, and they hadn't heard anything back yet, so I'm hopeful that something is being done because we've got no communication now with city departments. We had in the past at least gotten return calls, letting us know what was happening or what was being worked on, and our messages now go unanswered. So we have to come to you now to communicate because we're not getting any responses. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else in the audience? Wait, 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 wait. You only get to speak once. Were you up here before? For public hearing? Okay, there you go. You are my...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just asking, like, this isn't being livestreamed.
Say your name, say your name again.
Nicole Joltersma.
Okay.
This isn't being livestreamed tonight. I don't know what's going on, and the agendas aren't being posted for like the learner governing...
Livestream on WebEx?
Yeah, on Facebook right now.
WebEx.
Well, I mean, people on Facebook aren't seeing this.
I don't know about Facebook. Legally, we do WebEx.
Yeah.
Facebook, you don't know who's on Facebook? WebEx, we know who it is.
Yeah, but it's not being streamed tonight, which is weird.
I have no idea about that. I'm IT guy, he might know, but I know it's on WebEx, so if you want to watch it, we're on WebEx.
Okay. Nobody knows anything here, ever.
No. And our official site, I want to tell you, says it is WebEx and not Facebook.
Yeah, yeah. Do you guys ever get embarrassed that people come up and nobody ever answers anybody?
No, we're not supposed to answer. It's public hearing. You're supposed to come up and talk to us.
Good evening. My name is Jay Little. I live at 1300 Eden Street, and I've lived there since 2012. My family has owned that property since 1992. My first question is to Mr. Fish, and I brought two things that I would like you to talk to these zoning people about.
Jay, you have to address the president of the council. That's me.
Okay. Well, I'm here to ask you, to ask Mr. Fish to address these people that are in our zoning department, because obviously they do not know what plants are that we eat. It's very clear. And because somebody came to my house and said that I had nothing of value in a certain area, I'd like $5 a strawberry plant from the city. And my other question that I have is, when is the last time that we have had an emergency drill in our city? Because as you know, most of the city is within seven miles, I believe, of the Robert Young rail yard. And when I was in high school in night, and I graduated forty years ago this year, one of the things that we talked about at that time was, one of the first places that would probably get struck if there was a nuclear exchange between the United States and Russia, and that is a, probably a possibility, or China for that matter, that at Bethany, which is where I went to high school, that was twelve miles away, we wouldn't be affected by it. But anything that was within five miles of that rail yard would be obliterated, especially if it was a medium-sized nuclear weapon. And we have not, to my knowledge, had any kind of test of any emergency management thing like that. As long as I've been back here in Elkhart since I was in college, which would have been in 1989, which is when I returned from the University of Southern Indiana down in Evansville, we have not had any kind of emergency thing like that. And I think that we should have one. I've talked with several police officers. We have not had that. The other thing that I find really interesting is that several years ago, I was party to a meeting at the Concord Trustees Office, and they were talking about emergency responders at the time. And I know about this very well because years ago, when I worked for the University of Notre Dame as a lifeguard, I worked for Brother Louis Hersick. And I've had some discussion with Mr. Hinky about this, about safety with regard to swimming, but this goes beyond that. Brother Hersick was responsible for all of St. Joe County's records on an annual basis to know who was certified in first aid, who was certified for Red Cross, who was certified in first aid, who was certified in CPR, who was certified as lifeguard. And at the Concord Township meeting, one of the things that they talked about was if there was ever a dirty bomb or something like that, or anthrax that was let out at the fairgrounds, how would we respond? And they looked scared when I said, "Well, do you guys have a list? Have you guys ever gone and talked to the Red Cross?" And my point in bringing this to your attention is because if this country loses stuff, and it's clear that we're starting to lose some stuff, what are we going to do if we don't have food? And we better take a lot different approach to what we do. So part of the reason why I came down here is I wanted to bring these things to Mr. Fish's attention because he is a master gardener. And I think that for emergency preparedness, we should be thinking about these kind of things. We have not had much discussion in any way, shape, or form for a long, long time, whether it be at Democratic Party meetings or civically. We are not having those kind of discussions. And we should be having those kind of discussions. We are not. And I think it's pretty important that we start thinking about those kind of things because we have not had those kind of discussions for a while. But again, we should be talking about emergency preparedness, such as not even necessarily a nuclear strike, but dirty bomb, tornadoes like we had the year before I was born in 1965 in this neighborhood. We have not had drills like that. Yeah, we have emergency sirens that we hear every noon. It's every noon on Saturday. You can hear them year-round. But we have not drilled, to my knowledge, and had lists of people to take care of this. And I'm bringing this to your attention because I think it's a pretty important thing to do. We have not had a discussion about this kind of stuff lately.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is anyone else in the audience?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Council rules says anything germane will be addressed to the council. It doesn't specifically say the council's president.
Okay, thank you very much. That's not the interpretation I got from the parliamentarian, but thank you. Is anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor for council... No scheduling of committee meetings. Acceptance of communications. Got a motion from Mr. Fish.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Heinz. To accept communications, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If the opposed sign, motion carries. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion and a second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.